Good evening, and it's Tuesday, February 14th, 2023, which is Valentine's Day. And this is a city council meeting. And the first order of business would be the roll call.
Mijaski.
Yes.
Reeves.
Here.
Hunt. Schumacher.
Here.
The Nagus.
Present.
Takowski.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Rath.
Here.
Hiley.
He's here.
Yeah. Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Lagaki.
Here.
Okay, at the time, I have 11 Alders present, and I do know Alder Hunt is in Florida and would probably be attending late.
Okay, thank you. Item number two is something new. We put on all the agendas. We're going to be putting on this certification of compliance with open meeting laws. And that's just a reminder to make sure that these meetings are properly noticed. So that's something new that you'll see. Minister reports in packet. Item number four is public comment. I don't believe we have any public speakers tonight unless somebody in the room would like to speak. Hearing none. Communications and presentations. Are there any communications from council members this evening?
I'm here. I'm row.
Okay.
Just a reminder to take the sustainability survey. It's available out on the city website in the sustainability page, or hopefully you'll see some ads for it around town.
All right, thank you. President Hirsch, did you have communications?
Yeah, I was talking with the mayor last week, and we've been talking about this for some time. I was thinking about seeing what you guys think about forming like a subcommittee to look at kind of our, how to green up our, our new buildings that are going up, kind of have, you know, a community and council, or some members of council, to look at kind of lead certification, or whether that's appropriate, and other things that we can add into areas that may or may not, you know, some new development. So we're looking at like possibly so ready, you know, electric vehicle stuff, you know, it's something that the subcommittee can look at, similar to what the RDA did with the Riverfront Development. And I was just wondering what you guys are thinking, and if anybody'd be willing to be on a subcommittee. I talked to one of our local developers in town, and he's really excited to be a part of it if, if we go forward. So I'm looking for if there's anybody else that would be interested on city council.
We were just talking about this at sustainability last night, the same topic. I can't take anything else on right now, but if you would like to, I could share it with the sustainability committee and see if anyone's interested. I'm, I'm sure they would be.
What would, what would be the difference between that subcommittee and the sustainability committee?
I think this would be just, it could work in conjunction with the sustainability. Sustainability had a big list of things. This would be taking one of their things and actually moving forward with it.
Well, if anybody has any thoughts about that, you can certainly, you want them just email?
Yeah, just email me.
Yeah. And then we'll see where that goes. And then we'll also talk to sustainability about it as well. See if there's anybody on there, because they've been working on the topic. Did I see a communication over here?
I was just gonna ask, is that, I'm assuming that's a short term or, you know, just a...
Yeah, it's a limited term, kind of.
That hot committee, yeah.
Is something you want to be on?
Think about it. I'd have to see, you know, what you're looking at as far as scheduling it out, how many meetings you're gonna have, when they're being, so on.
Yeah, very limited, you know, trying to get information together, seeing what's feasible. I mean, we don't want to overwhelm developers, but there's a lot of, around the country, a lot of cities and municipalities are going this route. So I think it'd be nice to kind of research that and see what's appropriate for Stoughton.
Yeah, I throw my hat and ring on that. And I would share that some of the, the RDA and some of the other committees are taking a look at our current TIF policy to see if there's an opportunity to include some language in there, at least the TIF projects. So that might dovetail into what you're talking about as well.
But Rachel, it's great to hear that that's what you guys were talking about last, last night.
Yeah, I think that's perfect. Glad to hear you guys are setting that up.
Communication? If I could?
Yep, go ahead.
We're planning a committee of the whole meeting for the second, I believe, of March. And I talked to President Hirsch about adding a second item on there for an item coming out of public safety, where we're going to be looking to make a rather major change in how we do the liquor license, individual liquor license. And so I just wanted people to be aware of that. I believe we'll be sending out some information in that packet. So if the, you know, take a close look at it, because it is, it is a major change. It's taking away some, some of the duties of council and putting it all on public safety. So it's, it takes a lot of, a lot of thought, a lot of research. And we're gonna have to do some convincing to make sure you understand what it, why we're doing it. And so I think it's going to be something that we, it's gonna be well worth our time to, to discuss in a committee of the whole meeting.
Hopefully, Matt, you and your team are available that night.
Yeah, we'll have to be, Derek, for sure, and, and I will also try to be. Do we have that date selected?
March 2nd.
Yeah, we kinda had to save the date, so it's, it's a Thursday evening.
March 2nd at 6:00, it starts.
And I think we have two topics. We have the alcohol policy, and then we also have the ARPA. And I would assume we'd let Matt and his team go first, so we can get them in and out. I would anticipate each topic will take at least an hour. I mean, the policy, the alcohol policy one is pretty comprehensive, although I know public safety has been doing a lot of work to get, get it narrowed down to decision points. But there's still a lot of background information that will have to be gone through by the city attorney to kind of set the stage for the decisions.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's gonna take, you know, a half an hour or an hour and a half, because there will be a, a recommendation from the committee on actual, on ordinance and a policy that have been developed. But they spent a lot of time on it, and there may be a desire to get into some of the weeds on this stuff at the council. And if there is, then we can do that at a committee of the whole meeting.
No, I think it's, it's something that they should get into the weeds on, because it's, it's, like I said, it's a, it's a change that affects council. And, you know, I want, I want to have a full, full-blown discussion on it, so everybody's comfortable with it.
I'm sorry, that was March 2nd at 6:00 PM?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thursday.
Are there any other communications from any of the council members? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. There's a couple items on...
I think we've got one more, Forward Development has their presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped them. All right. For some reason, I was thinking we were gonna do that with their item. We do have a, a presentation from Forward Development Group on their, their concept plan. And Connor's here this evening, and he can come up and present. You want to share the screen, Rodney?
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, Connor, how's it going?
Going well. Thank you very much, Mayor Swigley.
Two nights in a row, you should have this down.
I know, I'm lucky to get to spend Valentine's Day with you guys. I appreciate the, the time and consideration and review of our, our concept plan here. I'll, I'll go through a similar presentation as last night with Plan Commission, but did want to highlight a few key items as we set the stage to review this concept plan. As many of you are aware, the initial concept for a portion of these lands that we're gonna be discussing tonight was planned initially for a conference event center as part of a second phase for the Hilton Hotel. We understand that, and, and what we're bringing forth, we're looking for feedback here today on a modified concept. Since the original design of those plans for that conference event center, a great deal has changed in the market, which has caused FDG to, to revisit and further evaluate the best option for that parcel moving forward. We ultimately reached the conclusion that expanding the hotel scope to include that conference event center was not in the best interest of the project at this time. In particular, the pandemic placed significant challenges on, on the hospitality market just in general, as many are aware. But personal travel's starting to rebound at this time, we're noticing that. But what we're lacking and observing in the market right now is that business travel has not yet recovered in that same manner. The Hilton Hotel came on the line in August of 2020, in the midst of the uncertainty, and due to the timing, the, the asset has yet to stabilize. So I think, looking back at records, I think occupancy, for example, in 2022 for the hotel was at mid-40% range, and the initial projections for, for the financial model were in the mid-60% range when that came out. So due to that timing, it's, it's caused some strain on the project in terms of, of cash flow, and it's, as it sits right now, it's, it's difficult to invest in additional dollars and expand that hotel scope. So we went back to the drawing board and evaluated alternate land uses that, that could seem fitting for this parcel. We noted market demand for multifamily housing across the board, but we wanted to see how this could be integrated in, potentially into the Kettle Park West development. The original concept plans, I think dating back to the 2015 timeframe, had showed a few hundred units, which is where the, we ended up changing that as we went through the design process and plating process. And that's actually where the alley lots are constructed now, that multifamily got removed. Back in mid-2021, I believe it was the July timeframe, we looked at doing market rate multifamily on the commercial lots within the commercial center along Jackson Street, on lots three and four, just south of the Hilton Hotel. Ultimately, we procured additional commercial users and chose to go down that path and did not integrate multifamily development into Kettle Park West at that time, which brings us to where we're at right now, and the ultimate proposal to include market rate multifamily on lots 27 and 15. So up for discussion this evening and for feedback is that initial concept plan. It anticipates a two-lot CSM and a plan development, general development plan for approximately 140 units of market rate multifamily housing. Lot one of the proposed CSM would redefine the Hilton Hotel boundary, and lot two of the proposed CSM would combine the current lot 27, which is the residential portion, and then the northern portion of the current lot 15, which is the Hilton Hotel lot. That would result in an approximate 4.3 acre site to develop for residential land uses. We're proposing two separate four-story buildings with units ranging from studios to two bedrooms. Average, average unit size for studios is anticipated to fall between the 550 and 650 square foot range, one bedrooms between the 700 to 800 square feet range, and two bedrooms ranging from 1100 to roughly 1250 square feet. Proposed amenities to include are a community room, a fitness center, multi-use trails and path connections, electric vehicle charging stations, open space amenities, and patios and seating areas. Overall, the site is positioned such that the multifamily units would act as a transitional land use between the commercial center and the single-family housing of the Meadows. These units are aimed not only to satisfy an overall market need, but also offer an alternate housing opportunity for future residents that desire to live in the Kettle Park West area but are unable to outright purchase a home just yet. The multifamily units would satisfy that need, but allow those residents to transition into the alley homes, for example, as an entry-level buyer, and ultimately, a single-family home site in the Meadows subdivision. So with that, we thank you for your consideration and welcome any feedback or questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from Alders this evening? So I think the purpose of this was just to kind of do an introduction. They were at the Plan Commission last night, trying to get some feedback. I mean, obviously, you know, in a perfect world, you know, the convention center would have been constructed next to the hotel. There's definitely, you know, is a need for this type of product. I feel like as the community grows, there might be some other opportunities, you know, for a convention center or some amenities that can host large events. But certainly, I think Connor's here tonight just to kind of gauge your initial reaction and any thoughts or ideas that you might have about the project.
I have some questions. This is Rachel.
Sure.
Can you explain what the grass paver is on the fire lane?
Yeah, absolutely. That is a great question. When laying out the site, we...
I think you're a little bit close to the microphone, possibly.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry about that.
No worries, that's much better.
The, the grassy paver area was intended for fire and EMS access. When looking at how to circulate around those buildings, we wanted to provide a green space buffer without paving that area, but also provide an area for a fire truck to access the, the spaces on those alternate sides of the building.
Great, thanks. I would just make a comment that if you could consider natural planting areas...
Sure.
Versus green grass, kind of in lawn versus natural planting to help with pollinators and nature. And then I was just wondering what the lowest rent cost of a unit would be, and how many of those are, kind of looking at affordable housing type perspective?
Sure, sure. Right now, you know, we're, we're seeing rents, and, and we haven't completed the financial model just yet. Our, our goal would be to come in with the best product that we can for the market to achieve market rate rents for the Stoughton area. That being said, we understand there's a certain threshold in affordability. We have talked with affordable housing developers. We aren't one. It's, you know, it, it takes a specialty to navigate those programs, receive those credits. There's, there's incredible developers that, in this area, that are very good at it. And we've talked about potentially joint venturing, or looking at, you know, working with them. But right now, you know, we're, we're proposing to come in on a market rate play. That's, that's all we, that, that we work with. But that being said, we see the market rate rents falling somewhere in the dollar 30, probably dollar 40 to dollar 70 range, depending on where they fall in terms, per square foot, that is, depending on, obviously, a studio being a smaller unit's gonna have a higher cost per square foot. But for a two-bedroom unit, for example, at 1,000 square foot, at a dollar 70, that'd be around 1,700 a month. Again, we haven't finalized any financials just yet, and it's all predicated upon where construction costs come in. But our goal is gonna deliver, to, goal is to deliver something that the community is able to afford.
President Hirsch, did you have some questions?
Yeah, I mean, I guess initially, I, you know, I was on city council when the Hilton proposed their project in the convention center, and I know the community was really looking forward to it, and I know local businesses were. So it's really a great disappointment that that's not happening. And I guess I wish that there was a way to encourage you to rethink that, because we were just talking to another local developer last week, and he was under the impression that things are recovering and the need for convention centers are increasing. And so we're putting, again, Stoughton behind the eight ball to host conferences. We have Stoughton Trailers that is, you know, about to build a headquarters, we have Nelson's, we have Cummins, we have a lot of big corporations here that I think a convention center is good. And I know at that time, I was talking to the teachers' union, and they usually have conventions, and they were excited that Stoughton was possibly having a facility coming, because they're always looking to go to other communities. So it's really, really a disappointment that once again, Stoughton is kind of overlooked on an amenity that we, you know, as a council, a few years ago, really thought that we needed. And yes, COVID happened, but there is recovery and things are moving forward. And it seems like we're, there's a lot of development that are putting in multifamily housing to the point that I think, you know, we might become saturated in that, but we're not being saturated with respect to a convention center that would be a really good asset for this community. The second thing is that question that Rachel had with the fire lane. If you're expecting fired trucks to use that lane, how does that work with respect that there isn't really a road that leads there, nor if it is grassy or native planting, how are trucks gonna be able to utilize that? And especially in the winter, is that even really feasible?
Sure, sure. That is a great question. Right now, the pavement between the two buildings there is shown as the underground access. We haven't developed full civil drawings yet, obviously, but coming into that site, that would be a proposed level area before it goes down into each of the underground access. The, the concept that we went back and forth internally was, do we extend the pavement into that area and bring it up to create more of a formal drive aisle, if you will? The, the thought was to preserve more of the open space and grassy look for a portion of the year, but then again, it comes down to snow storage and where that gets put and accessibility throughout the year, like you mentioned. So that's something throughout the design process and working with our engineer on auto turns and, and making sure those movements can, can work. As we get down into the details, that, that's something that we're gonna have to pay close attention to, not only there, but throughout the site. A key item that was brought up last night at Plan Commission was access and circulation as a whole. The movements through, you know, the, the proposed access easements on the Hilton site, the full access through Cromwell. So we, we fully understand that that's a key component of the site plan that's gonna have to be paid close attention to.
Yeah, that would be the second thing I was bringing up, is make sure that it's accessible more so than just a driveway. I mean, you have a lot of units there, a lot of vehicle traffic, so... But again, going back to my first point, I would love it if you revisit the convention center.
Anybody else have any comments or feedback that you'd like to share with Connor this evening?
I, I have a sort of like a step, take a step back sort of question. How did it go from being this plot of land will be a convention center to now it's not, so it's gonna be a multifamily complex? It seems way different, and is, I, I don't understand like who owns it or how that, how that sole switch comes to be.
So I think, you know, there's two perspectives. There's one from the developer, and then there's one that would, you know, I think Rodney could maybe answer the zoning or the comprehensive plan part of it. I'm not sure which one we want to answer first. You want to take a stab at it, Rodney?
Yeah, this would require a rezoning to occur. So that is something that the council would have to approve in order to make this, make this function as proposed. As was highlighted, the existing lot 15 is depicted on the screen here, the southern portion of, or this northern portion of that site was not planned for multifamily. The area depicted here as lot 27 was planned for multifamily, a density of which was 10 units per acre, MR 24, and, or MR 10, I believe, MR 10. With 24 units, I think it was accommodating here. As proposed on the 4.3 acres, that would increase the density overall to about 34 units per acre, and you would have to make a finding and approve a rezoning to accomplish that, along with the building height as an exception to that zoning district as well. I think they're looking at a 62-foot-high pitched roof building. So there's a number of exceptions. Couple other things that were mentioned internally and with, with last night's discussion was related to dedication of parkland. There were, I believe, the 24 units that were anticipated on lot 27 are accommodated in their current dedication for parkland, the addition of another 116, if I'm doing my math right. You know, that parkland would have to be contemplated either in a payment in lieu at the satisfaction of the city, or in other cases, for this development, we've required them to acquire additional land to the west of the current Kettle Park West limits, annex it into the city, and then give it to the city as part of the dedication requirement. So those, those certainly are items that'll have to be reconciled and worked through if, if this moves forward.
And then from your perspective, Connor, maybe you can give a little more history of how you got here.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. As Rodney mentioned, the residential lot, lot 27, is part of the Meadows. That was plotted as part of the overall residential plat, but dating back to the Hilton Hotel site, the, the rear half of that site was the Phase 2 of, of that development. I think it was back in the 2017, 18 timeframe when that was, that went through approvals and then ultimately broke ground in 2019 and delivered in 2020. But that, that second phase included an approximately, I think it was 9,000 or 10,000 square foot conference event center that would attach to the rear of that hotel. And the intent when that was designed is, was really to bring in weekend stays at the hotel. Our, our market studies had depicted strong business travel in this market for the various businesses, as, as mentioned, Nelson Global, Cummings, Stoughton Trailers. That was all taken into account in our market studies for the hotel. So we anticipated strong business travel, but what we were lacking in our market studies was weekend stays and, and getting those occupancy rates up. And what we've actually observed to date has been the opposite. We've struggled during the week on the business travel, but the weekends have, have been doing well, largely attributed, we think, to other event venues in the area, Lagarette, Fields Reserve, and so forth. So we're, we're seeing that the, those weekend stays are being satisfied by the market, but what we're, what we're still lacking is picking up that business travel that we, we haven't observed coming back yet. So from a operational standpoint, that, that's what we've been, been observing, and that's kind of some of the history and that went into the change here in, in those two parcels.
May I answer your question, Frank?
Yes.
Okay. I have other person Reeves, Attorney Dreigney, and then other person Takowski.
So I'm just wondering, have, this may be premature, because I know you're just sort of out getting initial information, but I'd be wondering about a traffic impact study at some point, because I know at this point, it's so congested out there already. It's really, it makes me want to avoid that whole area as it is. So I'm just, you know, wondering the convention center versus, you know, multi-level and multifamily homes. Traffic is definitely, is the thing that jumps out to me, so I'd be looking for a traffic impact study for sure, I think. That was it. I don't know, it's a question, but I'm guessing you haven't gotten to that point yet, but that would be just a, a request for down the road, I think.
Yeah, that is a great point. Mayor Swigley brought that up last night, actually, as well. And that's something we talked about in the office first thing this morning, was getting a third party, a taddy, for example, to look at the impacts, peak travel times, the difference between those two uses. So, you know, next steps would absolutely be engaging a traffic engineer to do those studies.
Attorney Dreigney, did you have something?
Just Rodney, that existing lot, 15, is that plan development, or what is the today area that was planned for the, for the convention center? So that's part of a plan development?
Yeah, it has to go through a rezoning.
Right, and so how specific is the peak plan development zoning for that parcel? Does it specify convention center, and that's it? Does it specify convention center and that's it? That's the only thing that's allowed there under the current?
I don't believe so. I'd have to look back. I don't know that answer. I think it was zoned, actually. Yeah, it was actually planned business.
Oh, planned business, not planned development?
Right.
Okay.
Alder Person Tokowski has her virtual hand up.
Yes, I do. Thank you. I just was thinking that it would help me in particular with a little more information about some of the business decisions. I know there's a huge demand for apartments right now in the areas around Madison. I also had, had a thought about whether there is some way to measure the impact of this in a positive way for the school district. And I mean, I'm sure that when the, the company made this choice or had this idea, that there are some pretty valid business reasons to do it. So I, I guess I would, I would be glad to know about those things so I can weigh the options in a fair way. Thanks.
Thank you. And I think I saw a virtual hand from Alder Person Mieski.
You did. Thank you. This was at Planning Commission yesterday and a couple of issues came up. And the biggest was the density of, of the, of the development and the impact on the surrounding new neighborhoods that were coming in and the traffic. Also, what's not talked about, which is shown in this prep plan, is to have an ingress egress going out through the, or through the hotel's parking lot, which could cause all sorts of problems also and is not necessarily a good precedent to be setting. And the vote to move forward with this was three to two at Planning.
Not sure we took action on this part at Planning. I think we just introduced it. But certainly your, your comments were, were reflected from the commissioners accurately. Any other questions or comments or feedback that you want to give Connor? He needs, he needs some work to do.
Thank you.
Well, I, last comment would be, I, I think you indicated there was a market analysis done a number of years ago, associated with the hotel and the convention center that was a factor in the business decision about this plan. Had, has that marketing, have you done a new study to evaluate potential demand for, you know, the, the convention center type use? Has that been updated? And could that be shared with the policymakers or is that not available?
No, that, we can pull the original study. It has not been updated. That is something that we could look to do, an update from a third party. We, we've purely based our decisions on what we observed as a substantial demand for an alternate product combined with the performance of an existing asset being the hotel. That the performance is impacting the business decision, moving forward slightly more than the market, but they do piggyback each other right now. You know, it, it kind of, I would like to touch on that market demand as well, but before I move on and mention that, that is something Attorney Dragney, we can look into and, and discuss. I believe it was Tracy Cross that did that third-party market study, but I can check back with our records. And in, in terms of the market demand for multifamily, I believe it was, it was an article, I think it was in Business that, that put it out maybe a few weeks back, but I think I saw a statistic that for every vacant unit, there is 29 applicants in, in the greater Madison area in Dane County Market. It was, it was a third-party study done in the Madison area ranked as the fifth most highest demanded multifamily market in the country. Vacancy rates are as low as Miami, Florida in, in some of these markets. And you're starting to see national developers look at this market as well. The numbers are relatively outstanding. It's been a strong asset class for quite some time, but part of what attributes to it locally here and what we believe is the difficulty to enter the single-family home market right now and affordability. As interest rates climbed, it became increasingly more difficult to come up with that down payment for the first-time home buyer. So in general, residents are renting longer, they're expecting higher-quality finishes, higher-quality units, more amenities. And we've seen that observed in the marketplace over the past few years, not only with our projects that we've done, but with multiple other really good market rate developers that have focused on this. So it's part of the affordability issue and entering the market for a single-family buyer and, and part of the interest rate environment, but that, that changes, that fluctuates. But right now, the costs to enter the market are so great. So the thought is if we could bring some housing to the Kettle Park West area and potentially have those alley lots, there's 92 of those lots platted. Once those are completed, that could be that entry-level home that would keep these families in the Stoughton community, in the area as they transition even into some of the full home sites within the Meadows and some of the latter phases too. So it was really aimed to be a transitional use that the early plating of Kettle Park West had planned for, but we haven't accomplished to date. So.
All right. President Hirsch.
I just have a question. You know, when you're talking about the, the hotel, you know, performing better on the weekends with the events or whatever, but underperforming during the business section, how is this development actually going to help that hotel actually get better in those sections? Or are we looking at the hotel eventually failing because of not having those sections? So, you know, again, it's, it seems like the way that you would increase the, the weekday use of the hotel would actually be a convention center as opposed to, you know, more multifamily house, you know, units because you're, this is not going to help the hotel at all survive. So are we then looking at closing the hotel? I mean, what, what is the, the actual, you know, trajectory for the hotel if we're not trying to figure out a way to actually help it improve?
Sure. Yeah. And we're absolutely not looking to do any of those things. We're, you know, we believe the performance right now of the hotel is directly related to timing. You know, there were substantial grants for hotels that, as a result of COVID, were, were granted in early 2020. And to be eligible for those grants, you had to be open and in operations prior to the end of February of 2020. And I believe we, we came online in the July, August timeframe, so we just missed that cutoff. Some of those grants did help. A lot of the local hotels float for a certain amount of time before business picked back up, but we, we believe it's related to the timing of everything. We do think business travel will pick back up. It's just a matter of time. So we, we don't believe the hotel will fail, but we're, we're in a position right now that expelling the additional capital at, especially at a level where current construction costs are at, it, it's not financially feasible to construct it at this point. So it begs the question of, you know, having vacant land sit there or proposing something that's a, a market need, which is the route that we ended up taking.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Is that the kind of feedback you were looking for?
It was, yes. That was very helpful.
All right. So I'm not really sure where we go from here. Obviously, we're not on for any action tonight, but do you plan on coming back or?
If you'll have me back.
Only if you do everything we said.
Yeah. No, we do. We got not only tonight, but great feedback last night at Plan Commission. We have some work, work to do. We have a work cut out for us, but we, we appreciate the feedback. We know where we have to go from here and we'll be in touch with, with staff and, and timeline for anything formal.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
All right. I believe that takes us to the consent agenda. And we have a couple of items on there. I would entertain the motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion by Haley, a second by Reeves. Anybody like anything acted on separately from the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any, and any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is Ordinance Two of 2023. And that one came from the Finance Committee. It's on for a second reading. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right. Ordinance Zero Two of 2023 is an amendment to Section 2-585, the hotel motel tax of the City of Stoughton Municipal Code. This is a second reading, so I move for approval.
For a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Jensen. Alder Person Schumacher.
This one does some, some updating within that ordinance regarding how the tax revenue is allocated and the way that the percentages are, are split up in there. Brings us into compliance with Patriot Act and will go or increase the room tax rate at, it looks like June 23.
All right. Anything you want to add, Director Eilerner, on the room tax?
We're actually the lowest municipality in Dane County when it comes to room tax, and this will put us at the statute to allow to amount. It will give the majority of the revenue to the Stoughton Visitor Services, but we do retain 10% of that revenue. So there'll be a slight increase in city revenues because of it.
30%. We can keep 30%, right?
We can keep 30%, but we only keep 10%. We give the other 20% away also.
Oh.
I did not propose any change to that. I just proposed the change in the accounting treatment and the increase from 6% to 8%.
Might want to think about that other issue too at some point because the council has the authority to retain 30% for, for your general fund. 70% has to go to tourism promotion and development, but.
Well, I will leave that up to the Chair of the Finance Committee if he wants to bring that issue back.
We should add it into our future agenda item.
If you'd like, I can put it down there as a reminder.
You're going to run out of room at the end of that page.
We are on letter M yet. Did we get past the middle of the alphabet?
Without, well, I got it here in front of me. I'm up to.
Change to numbers.
G is in George, so maybe that means I have to work on something else to get the list down a little.
Are there any questions or comments on, on the ordinance? I don't see any virtual hands and I don't see anybody in the room. So all in favor of the ordinance, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. New business, we have a first reading and this is coming from Public Works. Alder Person Mieski.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Ordinance Three of 2023, amending Section 66-904, parent eight of the Stoughton Municipal Code, Stormwater Basin Aesthetics. This was approved 6-0 on January 19th, and it's for your consideration.
All right. It's a first reading, so Rodney, you want to highlight the changes?
Yeah, on your screen is the, the changes that came out of the Public Works Committee. Subsequent to that, we've included in the packet some suggested language that the consulting engineer is at least presenting some philosophy about dealing with the aesthetics during normal water levels. So as part of the Public Works Committee packet, we've included that for Thursday night to at least visit whether there's any, any suggested additional changes to enhance the aesthetics and landscaping associated with it. But we did receive some written, written suggestions. Those are included in your packet tonight as well. It's not to dictate a change. It's another viewpoint from a development team that deals with these and design scenarios. So we'll probably have a, a little deeper discussion about that at the Public Works Committee meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, it seems like we updated this recently and we were looking for clarification. We had a stormwater pond that was introduced in one of the developments that I believe the developer felt met the spirit of this. And the Public Works and the council wasn't so sure about that. So I think what we're trying to do is get some clarification here. So it's, there's a clear understanding by the current and future developers what the expectations would be.
Correct.
And I know this is something that Alder Mieski spent a fair amount of time on. I don't, if you have anything else you want to add, Tom?
No, just that, you know, we're, we're just trying to give them a better understanding of what we're looking for so that, so that there's not confusion and, and we're not throwing obstacles at them that are not necessary.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from Alders? Otherwise, as Rodney said, we're going to maybe have a little more discussion at Public Works and then you would see this for a second reading at the next council meeting. Okay, we'll move on to the next one. And that is R 17 of 2023. And this is an item that was at the Plan Commission last night. Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is R 17, 2023, adoption of a public participation plan for the City of Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
For a second?
Second.
About Rachel.
Who said?
Tokowski.
Oh, thank you. Second by Alder Person Tokowski. Alder Person Caravelo.
This regards the Stoughton Trailers development or proposed Stoughton Trailers development at 51 and B and the likely consideration of a comprehensive plan amendment. And aside from that, I'm going to let Rodney take it for more explanation.
Sure. This is one of the initial steps in part of the Conference of Plan Amendment consideration process. Depicted on the screen is just the area being contemplated for that change. It's the 180 acres south and east of Highway 51 and County Highway B. The actual communication document or participation document is contained as an attachment here, but it outlines the, the meetings and the information that's planned to be distributed in different methods to do so. Obviously, community engagement's important in this process. As council members are aware, Stoughton Trailers is initiating this with an open house at their, at a, at a meeting next week, Monday, starting at 5:30 at the Sand Hill School, open to the public and seeking information and some, some guidance and communicate, community engagement as part of that process. So this item is the communication plan or the participation plan that's, that we're seeking approval of. It's not an adoption of a change to the agreement. It's just an adoption of the process to get the communication and the public participation included in this, this change.
All right. Thank you. And we have Danielle Thompson is here from representing Stoughton Trailers. If you want to just come up and introduce yourself because I have a feeling this group's going to see a lot more of you.
That might be true. I'm Danielle Thompson. I'm working with Stoughton Trailers as a project manager for the overall land development and working with them in the construction of their headquarter project, as well as working alongside Parks Committee for development of an ideal community park, which we're waiting for the results of the feasibility study to come back. We're working with Dan Glenn on that as well. And so there's a Um, we're working with Dan Glenn on that as well. And so there's a lot more information that'll become available probably in the next few weeks.
All right, thank you for being here. Any questions for Danielle?
Well, probably not, not necessarily for Danielle, but I did Plan Commission approve this last night. Was there any concern or...
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 And any opposed?
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Uh, next item came from Plan Commission as well. Or no, this one came from Finance, I'm sorry. Uh, R eighteen of twenty twenty-three. Um, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, uh, R eighteen of twenty twenty-three is a resolution to approve cost and, cost reimbursement agreement for Stoughton Trailers Highway fifty-one development, and so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Jensen. Alder Person Caravelo. All right, geez. Alder Person Schumacher.
Oh, make him do it.
I've seen way too much of you this week.
It was like, what?
This is um a lot of similar language that we've had with um other reimbursement agreements with other developers. Um, the difference being that we've included Stoughton Utilities into it, so we don't have to do separate resolutions for those things now. Um, and it was noted that the uh, on the fiscal impact with the dollar amounts undetermined, that's, we just, we just don't know what the final dollar amount of the reimbursement's gonna be until we know what is gonna be charged, so...
All right.
That's why it's ambiguous.
Okay, and I think this was drafted by Attorney Dragney. Is there anything you want to cover on this one?
Um, yeah, the purpose of this agreement is, at this stage of the process, to um make sure that the, it's costs the city will incur in connection with the Urban Service Area Amendment process, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment process, the subdivision review and approval and development process, the zoning process. All of those things that city staff and consultants will be working on. You know, your planning department, legal consultants, engineers, um, to make sure that those expenses um are paid. Um, and so the, the agreement commits the developer to reimbursing the city for those expenses and also includes um some upfront deposit amounts to, you know, make sure that we're getting those costs covered when they come due. So that's the, the purpose of the agreement on a big project like this and other similar development projects where we know we're gonna be spending a lot of time and money on them. Um, we, we want to have an agreement like this in place, and that's what this agreement is intended to do.
We also have some Stoughton Utilities as well.
So, yeah, I mean, Stoughton Utilities um developed its own agreement. We helped them develop its own cost reimbursement agreement for the work that it does on a project. And what, what Jill asked us to do is um basically include that as an exhibit to this agreement. So this agreement says, in addition to um, you know, what, what the agreement requires with respect to reimbursing the city, um, the developer is also committed to entering into that agreement with Stoughton Utilities to cover their costs. And there's a deposit there as well. Um, and I, you know, historically, Stoughton Utilities kind of operates a little independently of the city when it comes to their work and their costs. I don't know who bills for that, Dave. I don't know if somebody over there actually does the billing to the developer. Not you, right? Not your department.
Not my department anymore, but before, when my predecessor was over the two, it may have been my department.
For a while. So, that's one reason that we have these two separate agreements is that there is kind of some separation in terms of their process and their billing and, and, and the work that they do on a project like this. Um, but their, but their uh, their needs are addressed now in this agreement by, by putting the Stoughton Utilities reimbursement agreement into this, requiring the developer agree to enter into that as well. So, we hope, hopefully we have uh everything that we know of um in terms of costs that we're gonna be incurring addressed um through this agreement. So that's, that's what this is.
All right. Anything you should, gentlemen, would like to add from your perspective? Are we good?
Good to go, as far as I can see.
Okay, Alder Person Reeves.
I, I feel like I should know the answer to this since I'm on Finance, but where do those funds get deposited?
We've been doing the accounting wrong, but right now they're deposited into a balance sheet account in the general fund.
So, probably another agenda item, because I'm just thinking about staff time. And, you know, should we be really allocating it to the departments that are really doing the legwork on this? Because then it may help justify, you know, do we need more staff when we see that they're loaded up? But, you know, that's probably for another...
Yeah, we have been having internal conversations about capacity, you know, workloads and uh, you know, keeping track of our time as they're related to these projects by department. So those conversations are occurring. In fact, we had another one today with the full management team. So that's kind of a work in progress, and we could certainly report that out to Finance.
A new line item.
Are we on Greek letters now?
I'd have to kind of bone up on um those acr, or those letters before we go to it.
All right.
Pretty good practice run through COVID, though.
And, and I'll just mention, um, Danielle has kind of given us a heads up that we may come back to look at amending this, because there's some additional land area that they're taking a look at that may become part of this project down the road. So, um, we may, we may need to amend this um down the road, but um they're not quite there yet with that. So, we're just moving forward with, with the uh land area that is clearly included within the proposed development at this time. But I wouldn't be surprised to see this back in a month or so for just amending the area that's, um, that's covered.
All right. Um, anybody virtually have any questions or comments? You're pretty quiet out there. Director Glenn, do you have your hand up? Or no, that's, that's my mouse.
What's your mouse?
It's my mouse. It's fooling me.
Your mouse has your hand up.
Yeah, I was, you know, having all sorts of issues tonight. Um, anybody in the room here have any questions or comments? I was really hoping that you would raise your hand, Phil, so I could call on you.
They could redeem themselves.
Yeah. Looking for vindication. Um, all right. Hearing none, all in favor of the uh cost reimbursement agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Um, next item, this one is coming from Parks and Recs, R nineteen to twenty twenty-three. And this would be Alder Person Tokowski.
This is R nineteen twenty twenty-three. Uh, it was introduced February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. It's a resolution by the Common Council of the City of Stoughton approving City of Stoughton Park Design Guidelines. Um, and the Parks and Recreation Committee recommended six-zero on this November fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. Um, and I move to approve this resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Caravelo. All right. Anything you want to walk us through, uh, Alder Person Tokowski?
I, I guess I would just say that this was a somewhat monumental project and uh there were some very dedicated people who started this before me um and spent a tremendous amount of time. And fortunately, we have expertise on our committee uh that was made for this. So, um, it, uh, to me, it's a, it's a grand achievement. And Dan Glenn has apparently a, a presentation about it, so enjoy it.
So Mayor, do you want to just go through the slides and I'll cover them, or?
Yeah, I think Rodney has the screen, so just let him know.
Okay. All right, yeah, Rodney, we can start here. So, um, the, the purpose of the park design guidelines are really to provide direction to everyone that works on parks. You know, so it could be staff, both Parks Rec Department staff, Public Works staff, um consultants, whether they're, you know, landscape architects or in, or civil engineers and developers. Those are really the main uh people that work on our parks. And it's really for, a tool for evaluating new parks and the, and significant changes to existing parks. Uh, really to make sure that we're going down the right path as far as um the park design and building them out. Um, so, um, some, a couple of main goals for it are, you know, really to provide guidance to developers for site selection and the development of parks and then create a standard for parks and park equipment and amenities that are in the parks. So Rodney, you can go to the next slide. Uh, so two large issues we face are that we have existing parks with amenities that are not suitable for the park type or park classification uh that they're in. An example of this would be um the diamonds, the program ball diamonds and sport fields in our like neighborhood parks. And that, that's due to historical uh not having enough community park space. So we've been shoehorning these like type of amenities into neighborhood parks where the use, um, it's more of a community park space use, um, so you don't have conflicts. Then another issue that we face are the developers being unaware of our park system needs, wants or desires. And we end up uh having a negotiation process that ended up being flawed. And uh, the next slide will show an example of the site selection process. Uh, they went through a fifty-one west. So you can see it, this is um, on the left-hand side, that was the initial concept that was presented to the Parks and Rec Committee and uh myself. And um, the concept on the right is the actual finalized product. And you can see, you know, it's trail corridors and the, the street frontage with the parks and actually having a park on the east side of the development. Um, so there's wholesale changes. And we'd just like to really speed up that process, make it uh, you know, clarify it, make it more transparent for the developers and uh city staff and council members. So I'm, we're, I'm not, you can uh stop right there, Rodney. So, I'm not aware of any other really communities in Dane County with guidelines. Um, but however, they're really popular nationwide, especially um in Colorado and out west where they have like a lot of development going on. And they use these as tools, you know, to help steer the development in the parks that are in those developments. Um, then, yeah, it was just a lot, like Alder Tokowski said, it was, this was a lot of work on myself and the Parks Committee staff as far as, you know, doing the research, you know, explaining them what, you know, should be in a nice park and design rights and, you know, talking with professionals and people like wildlife specialists with the DNR and reviewing existing guidelines and reference materials. So the, this next session, section's going to be about general planning and design policies. Um, so you can go to the next slide, Rodney. So, there's best practices, these are general best practices for planning and design. Obviously, usually have a public input plan, um, involving, involve maintenance and recreation program staff in the design process. You lay out the site selection to minimize neighborhood conflicts. You know, you want visibility into the parks for safety and welcoming aspects. But AD compliance is required, um, and then sustainable design. Those are just really some key elements. So the...
Next page.
Uh, I think you might have s...
Yep, there we go.
Went through a slide. So some of the principles for site selection and planning, you know, we really want to have consistency with other plans such as our corp document. Um, have environmental protection of if there's like a sensitive area within a land, a piece of property that's going to get developed. And then one of the key things that we've been working on is having accessibility connectivity with the different parks, using trail systems, off-road trails, and really trying to get people to walk to parks instead of driving to them, especially if they're neighborhood parks. And having that efficient and connected bike and pedestrian transportation system. Um, so... So the, the park design and, and development, you know, really differs based on the type of park you're putting in. So there's different needs for different parks. And um, a community park, you know, that's who they service. Community park services the neighborhood or the community at whole, where a neighborhood park is really there just to satisfy the, the actual neighborhood where the, the park's getting put in. Um, so the, the next, this next slide, Rodney. So the, the first part, the classification type is a community park. So this is like your matt parks and your racetrack parks where they're, you know, people drawing people from the entire community. Um, typically you have like a diverse recreational activity and they, um, and they're large scaled. So, you know, if you're drawing people from the community at whole, the people are gonna ride by car, um, just not by bike or foot like you would see at a normal neighborhood park. And like I said before, a racetrack is a good example of a community park. So the next slide's uh, some of the features and amenities that were typically in a, a community park. Oh, so, so some of the, some of the uh major things that you do for site selection and development, key, community park, you want to have adequate buffers or natural space to shut great, the, you know, the active recreation from homes. So, the neigh, you don't have any neighborhood conflicts. That's one of the, the downsides of racetrack park where you have a large diamond right next to the road and um, we have, you know, people hit a home run or something at softball and it goes across the street into the neighborhood yards where typically you want a more of a buffer space between that activity. Um, and then the site really should be visible from adjoining streets and have street frontage. So people actually, if they're driving from outside of the community, they know where the park is. And then obviously looking into the park for visibility and safety concerns. And then the parking requirement's really varied depending on what type of activity you have. So if you have, there are standards uh for like baseball diamonds, for example. So if you have a baseball diamond, you want so many parking stalls, um, because people are traveling to the park. And I'm not gonna list all these off, but you can see some of the um things that are specific to community parks would be designated sport fields, you know, or sports complex within the park. Um, and then you'd want like a complex, like a pickleball court complex at Matt Park would be a good example of something that you would put in a community park. Um, and concession and vendor space, and then field lighting where you have the buffering, like I mentioned before, between residential homes and then the actual active use areas where you could have field lighting when, when create a neighborhood conflict. So neighborhood parks are really the bread and butter of a local park system. You know, they serve the, basically the neighborhood that they're placed in at a hole. So, um, they include space for unstructured active recreational use. So, you know, sandlot type of baseball diamond type things that are not programmed or green space where, you know, a child can uh play sandlot, you know, play football with the, the neighborhood kids, that type of thing. Um, and then, you know, a typical size are smaller. They're three to ten acres in size typically. And, you know, we have a lot of examples in Stoughton where East Park, um, Nordic Ridge Park is a, is a neighborhood park. Just basically what you'd see uh in your typical neighborhood. So you, typically you'd want fifty percent of the site level and usable. So you have space for both active and passive uses. You know, you, you want the site visible from adjoining streets. And you want that, that street frontage um for, you know, crime preventions, for visibility into the park. And also making it feel like it's a public space. Typically, you don't have parking within the park. It would be like on-street parking if you're going to provide parking or the angled parking like we have at Nordic Ridge or Norris. Just because the relatively small size of the space, you won't want to take up by parking. And then also the people, how people get to the park, you know, since it's, they're usually programmed to serve the surrounding neighborhood, you don't want people really driving there. And then, you know, the, the noise and active facilities, you know, such as basketball courts, um, you'd want them, you know, placed away from homes and things like that, so they don't have the noise issue. And then you'd want the, typically you'd want these neighborhood parks to feel like the neighborhood that... the neighborhood that they're surrounding. So, you know, one of the things that, you know, the city did is Nordic Ridge where the shelter is, it feels like it's the neighborhood, you know, it's part of the neighborhood where it's, it's not like an old-looking shelter or anything like that, but it fits into the, you know, the structures around the surrounding area. And I'm not going to list all those off, you can just go to the next slide Rodney, but it gives you the idea of what you can place in a neighborhood park. And then some of the things you'd like to avoid, you know, extensive planting type things, just because you have a lot of these parks and the maintenance endurance as far as staffing goes. Indoor recreation centers, you know, community pools, aquatic centers, and, you know, sports fields for the, like I mentioned before, and then off-street parking just because of relatively small size of the actual parks. And many parks are, they act as neighborhood parks, but they're typically placed in underserved areas. So Credle Park would be an example of one where that neighborhood doesn't have a neighborhood park. When the land was donated and Credle Park became into existence and it serves the neighborhood around it. And they're also called like pocket parks or tot lots and, you know, they're really small in size, typically one acre or less. And then for the site, you know, you typically want that completely, almost relatively level, just so you have, it's a small size, so you can have active use. And then you want visibility and frontage and, you know, street frontage so you can see into the park by 25%. And then access to the site, you know, typically you won't have a trail corridor entering that just because they're, they're placed within communities, but you don't want to have local street with sidewalks. And those are just some of the amenities. They're really scaled down compared to a neighborhood park, but they offer the same And then a special use park, they're typically have, you know, it's what it says, they're specialized or single purpose spaces. So Rotary Park would be an example where we have the gazebo and really the purpose of the park has been, you know, concerts in the park, whether it's catfish or gazebo music. And, you know, they could be nature centers, event spaces, plazas, you know, those type of things. And there's really no standard size for those type of parks. You know, access to the street, you know, typically you'd want these located on a collector's street just because it's, they could be larger scale use as far as like concerts in the parks or that type of things, we want them visible. And, you know, they, they would, you'd want these connected to trail corridors if possible so people can, you know, access them, you know, by either bike or foot. And then these are some of the amenities to consider and avoid. You know, you don't, you don't want to put anything in that park that would detract from the actual use that the park's designed for. And then trail corridors and greenways. So a trail corridor, you know, you have, it's basically you have a trail and the areas, the sides of the trail would be the actual corridor or greenway. And then, you know, it's really, it could be developed or landscape corridors, it could be natural, must have all greenways. And user, you know, sometimes users will ride by car, you know, access is a trailhead and then you get onto the trail and then obviously bicycle or foot. And the River Trail is a good example of a trail corridor or greenway. And they typically follow a special feature strip. So Virgin Lake Trail would be a good example of that, especially with the extension project where we're connecting from Roby Road through 51 West where it's going to follow the Virgin Lake and then connect through a natural area of the trail corridor into the park at 51 West. And then, you know, your corridor width would be an example of why you would want something wider is to provide wildlife movement within the trail corridor. So, you know, if you have like a lake or something that you're trying to get wildlife to, they're able to access that and, you know, we expect wild wildlife movement coming and going from the Virgin Lake area through the 51 West Park, especially with it being naturalized on the south side. And some of the things you'd like, look at are trail surface and, you know, what you're connecting to, if you want to connect to points of interest, not just natural things, but parks, schools, you know, grocery stores, that type of thing. And this is just, you know, some of the amenities you'd want to have. It's pretty straightforward if you've been on a trail, you know, viewpoints, wayfinding signage, you know, trailheads or kiosks or restrooms would be another example, you'd have a trailhead. And then natural areas would be our last park classification type. And these are just what they're, what you think they would be, they're natural area, undiscurbed and typically they'd be for passive use. And people using it would use a trail within the natural area. So you could think of some, you know, county park would be a good example or a state park where you're using a trail for hiking. And yeah, it's pretty straightforward, you know, it's small picnic shelters for future amenities, trail, nature trail systems, viewpoints, restrooms, that type of thing with typical amenities you'd want to have in these type of park classification types. All right, the next section will, section is really guidance for developers. So this first slide, this really outlines the design review process if you can, I'll go through them. So the first, the first part is the Scorpion programming meeting. It's where you sit, you know, staff sits down with a developer and we go over the corp, you know, what type of site selection we'd want within the development. And then the developer will use that as far as creating a concept plan for the development. And then the site selection review process happens with staff and it's been happening with the Parks and Rec Committee, where the developer will come in and ask for approval for the concept plan. And once the site selection's finalized and the development's finalized by the city council, we start the park master plan process and, you know, whether it's, we've been hiring a consultant using parking back piece, I'll pay for that. And then, once the park master plan is completed, we start the design and development phases of the, the build-out of the park. So you have 30, 60, and 90 design. And each different step, you know, you have, you work with stakeholders, if there are stakeholders, and make sure that, you know, their goals are being hit. And then you have the final documents and then, which is the bid document, you bid it out. Reconstruction meetings and you have construction and you have the post-construction and make sure that everything's completed and we're going to be able to operate the park. So the site selection process, this is really used for the continuing acquisition of, you know, the parkland. And then what we did is we created a minimum criteria and weighted criteria that we were looking for parks. So this is really to help create transparency in the site selection process. So the criteria, really the minimum criteria must be not to consider for further evaluation. And then what we use is a weighted criteria, this is to judge the, really, they're, they got a point, there's a point value system. And this has helped to, to really have a transparent process of what is a good site or what's not a good site. And it's based on, we'll go over some of the things at the next few slides, but what we're looking for in the parks. So as far as minimum criteria goes, we're looking, you know, developers have to dedicate a percentage of, or a set amount of land based on the housing types that are going in within the development. So we're not, we're looking at not accepting, you know, fee-in-luos really, because the city's better off accepting land instead of that. So we're looking at having a minimum of 90% of land required for that dedication requirement. And then as far as the slopes go, we just, we're looking at 5% or less and 10% of the land. So 10% of the property, it means really 5% is for ADA purposes and that'll let us build out, you know, have active use areas within the park. And then we want the parcel for the park to typically be contiguous. So one large parcel, not a bunch of fragmented parcels within a development. 51 West is a special case because you have Highway 51 splitting the development. And then frontage, we want 50% of the frontage, you know, by public street, public areas or undeveloped land with no rear residential lots adjacent to the park. So I've been mentioning this, like visibility into the park is for safety concerns, there's a thing called crime prevention through environmental design. You know, there's statistics saying that if people are able to look into the park, it's much safer. And then also the, it minimizes neighbor conflicts within the park. When you have homes bordering parks, then it becomes neighborhood conflicts as far as, you know, noise and all the other things that come along with, you know, people actually using parks. And then for existing conditions, we don't accept any parcels that have overhead utility lines. That's one of our criteria stipulations for grants through the DNR. We accept properties with utility lines, it won't let us, you know, won't be able to apply for grants. And then easements on stable soils, floodplains, wetlands, and toxic conditions. It's pretty straightforward. And then we want to have pedestrian and bikeway connectivity with all future new parks. So, you know, having a trail connection from park to park and it's, you know, we have that outlined in the park document with recreational trail maps and things like that. So that's a tool that can be used. And then for weighted criteria, we have two different weighted, two different types. We have a base criteria and a bonus criteria. So the base are basically the fundamentals and then the bonus are things that can give you a better score. So you can see that we like to have 100% of the parkland dedicated, so obviously there's more points. And then, you know, the minimum would be 90%, so that's why they get five points. And then slopes, you know, it just lets us have more active use areas, but we don't want all slopes at 5% or less either. So we want to have, maintain that landscape as much as possible as well. And then frontages, you know, the more visibility, the better, you can look into the park, it's more welcoming to the public. So, you know, these are the point systems we developed, obviously the more frontages there are, the higher point totals they get. And then connectivity. So, you know, I had discussions with the wildlife specialist with the DNR, they said the larger the better for wildlife movement, but 50 feet should really be the minimum if you want to encourage wildlife movement within the trail corridor. So that's why the 50 to 75 foot wide off-road trail corridor is at 15 points. 50 feet is the county's standard too as far as trail corridors for the minimum, I should say. But, you know, we just have some, some areas within the city where we have trails that are already existing that don't have the 50 feet wide existing for a trail corridor. So that's why we just made it that the park has to be connected to the off-road trail period as far as the minimum goes. And then the bonus, like I said, that's the, you know, some other things that we're looking for that might not be typical and it also helps them improve their point total. So some things like historical or cultural use resources on site, so if there's like an effigy mound or something of that nature, that would be a good qualify. Undisturbed sites supporting, you know, diverse plant and wildlife habitat. You know, it's pretty straightforward. And then, you know, if the park size is five points over 10 acres, the city, you know, if we look at our corp, it outlines that we're short of community park space. So if we are able to create a park that's, you know, can have diverse uses like that, it'll be, it benefits the community at large, so it's a bonus point. And then following that thought is the park can be expanded with future development. That's five points. And then obviously waterfront access, so if we can have more access to the river, you know, that benefits the community at whole. And then healthy, established, mature, non-invasive trees, things like oak savannas would qualify for that, so that'd be five points. And then, you know, obviously if they want to dedicate more parkland than's required, they could get extra points for that. So we did quite a few back and forth as far as developing these points in the fall and I think it was like three or four meetings in a row where we looked at these and, you know, I have a large spreadsheet and averaged it out and you can see the average is 66.33, but if you look at our last five parks, which would be the ones happening like the last five or six years, you know, we're at like a 75, I think, average. So the point totals basically makes sense, you know, it's, we're looking at, you know, something in that area for being acceptable. So one of the new things that develop, we'll ask developers to do is create a site evaluation report. And it really just summarizes the site and why it was selected over the other areas within the development for the park. And then it'll utilize that, that, that point criteria that we just discussed. And then it provides clarity on really why the, to the Parks and Rec Committee on why it was a good or a bad site and why it was selected. So it really creates some transparency throughout the process instead of, you know, like a develop, we've had developers come to Parks and Rec Committee and they say this is on the site, well, they don't have any pictures or anything to show that what's on that site. We've had like table and I've had to go to, you know, the parcels of land and document it myself where they should really be coming to the Parks and Rec Committee and myself with this data so we can make a decision and hopefully it'll speed up the process is an additional benefit. So this is really a, you know, a working document and, you know, we can add, you know, additional things to it. You know, other communities have things like standards as far as size, scale, and type of amenities within parks. So you have a standard like playground size for neighborhood parks or community parks. Or the type of, you know, trash cans and recyclable containers that you have in parks so everything looks the same and you have a feel of, oh, this is a city of Stone Park, you walk into it and everything feels the same. And then service levels as far as, you know, if you're going to, you know, have a standard of mowing athletic fields twice a week and no-mow areas and things like that. So there's, we can expand on this if, if we feel fit or feel the need, feel the need for it, I should say. But, I don't know, I covered a lot, but does anybody have any questions? And these are guidelines too, so obviously every, as far as development goes, you know, things can, you know, there might be some things where you can't do it, so you might have to make an exception to the guideline, but hopefully this gives us, or puts us in a better place as far as transparency to the developers, staff, and Parks and Rec Committee. And we also have a standard as far as how the different parks, amenities and stuff will be placed within the park.
All right, thank you. I know I have an initial question from Alder Person Reeves.
Thanks Dan. And I'm wondering if this might be part of the future when you talked about amenities, but how much control does the Parks and Rec Committee have about what goes in some of the parks? And I know I've talked about this before. The place that I'm most familiar with is Colorado where I see a lot of free play, you know, like rock climbing, minimal slides and swings, sort of the old standard equipment. know, like rock climbing, minimal slides and swings, sort of the old standard equipment. Splash pads are beginning to get a little bit like overdone, I think in some, not Stoughton, but in some communities. So sort of a lack of imagination in some of the park planning. So I'm just wondering, are you able to have some input about some of those, what those parks might look like or is that a future plan?
So they would fall under the park master planning process and having the type of amenities be laid out within the park and how, you know, everything would function. So for example, the Aggleston Woods Park and Fifty-One West, which is the east side part of it, the south end, south fifty percent of the park, well, there's like a naturalized area, which also includes a, a natural type of playground, like you're mentioning with rocks and things like that. So it's based, and those are really based on public input that's gathered through the master planning process. And then, you know, typically we, what we do is we'll select a playground in the, you know, the design development phase of the, of the park and then we'll take it to Parks and Rec Committee for approval.
And I would just add that Dan works pretty closely with Public Works and their team, especially with the existing parks, but even with the new parks, I think they're having more collaboration. Any other? President Hirsch.
Sure. I just want to thank Director Glenn and the Park and Recs Committee again on putting this together. It's been a long time going. I mean, we've been working on it for years and I think it's, the timing is perfect to have this come out because we have a lot of new development coming in and it will save a lot of time with respect to developers and the Park and Recs Committee so we can move forward on parks more quickly. I just, I would encourage everybody to vote for it because it's, we worked hard on it and I think it's a great new document and guidance for developers in our community.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Jim?
I will call on you this time. Alder Person Caravelo.
Yeah, there was a lot of good discussion at Parks and Rec that went into this and I want to thank Dan for, this was a lot of work, a big undertaking to get this done and a good process and good discussion there. And just thank Director Glenn for getting this done.
It's a big lift. I mean, been working on it for a long time and a lot of examples from several communities and not only in Wisconsin, but as Dan mentioned, out of state. You know, I would think that as, as we grow and these parks evolve, you know, there might be some tweaks to this thing as we go along. I don't think we should be too surprised if periodically Dan comes back and wants to amend or add or delete some things, but I think it's a really good document and it's going to serve us well. Looks like Alder Person, my ask you, has some comments?
I do. Nice work, Dan, on, on the, on the document. A lot of thought went into it. Just one question I have is, could you give me the reasoning behind a fifty percent frontage only, public, public frontage versus a higher, a higher amount?
There's, yeah, we looked at that and we figured fifty percent would give you two sides of a park that you see the visibility would be there for, you know, the crime prevention, like I mentioned, and then also the welcoming feeling into the park and you can feel like a public space. There's no set standard. You know, I saw a Bozeman Montana has a hundred percent frontage or, you know, backs up to a natural area. Others went to fifty percent. So it was really what we felt comfortable with, I guess.
Was there something to do with the, the cost of the roads surrounding the park and the question of, you know, what we could do as far as charging for, for the street construction?
I don't, I don't think that factored in. I think it was mostly this, there's not a, there's not a standard nationally as far as where it is. But most of the documents that were reviewed that were at fifty percent, but like I said, like they go on up to a hundred percent, like Bozeman Montana was an example for that. What we call fifty percent would give you the visibility within the park and make it feel like a public space.
President Hirsch.
And Dan, I think we also discussed that, you know, we didn't want to create island parks either. And so if you surround a parkland with all roads, we really looked at connectivity to other parks and hopefully they, you know, wouldn't have a road going through it and bike trails and if there was undeveloped land next to it. So that's another reason why it's fifty percent because if there's undeveloped land, we don't want to create, you know, an island. We want to keep as much connectivity to, for wildlife to move and for natural areas to remain natural areas.
Was there any follow-up? Alder Person, my ask you.
No, I was just curious as to why. I'm not understanding the reasoning about the connectivity and the wildlife issue because with, you know, if you're up against undeveloped land, you're up against undeveloped land. We're talking about lands that are being developed. And I'm just wondering why it wasn't like seventy-five percent where you have three sides open, where you have much more of an open feeling. But, you know, if that's what consensus was, that's the consensus. I prefer a higher, a higher amount, but that's just me.
Yeah, those are some of the areas where, you know, the bonus points could come in, you know, to, to encourage but not to require. And I think trying to offer some flexibility, knowing that some of the goals, you know, we can meet a hundred percent, some of them we can't, but I think we're looking for a balance overall. Any other questions or comments from Alders?
Oh, I do have one more.
Okay.
In the neighborhood parks, you had a, was it's a category for discouraging or practices that are not conducive to that category? Kind of distressed by the comments suppressing volunteerism through plantings in the park. I understand that, you know, there's maintenance issues because volunteers at times need to be augmented by city staff, but it's just kind of a, it's a pretty negative statement. And I think it's somewhat discouraging for a volunteer group. I'm thinking of the Prairie, Prairie people and people like that that are looking for, looking to do things in the parks and become, and have them become feel ownership to them as, as a public. It's just, it's just a perception that I got from it.
I mean, and that's why I think we have the stipulation here where if it's sponsored, maintained by a neighborhood or community group, that's allowed. Or if it's, if it needs to be maintained by the city and then it's probably something employed.
Yeah, I think the Prairie, the Prairie Task Force is kind of under the wing of the Public Works. So I think that that's been pretty successful. Some of the others in the past, you know, after maybe a year or so, they kind of lose interest and then we really don't have a backup plan. So I think the idea is, is when we're designing the parks and we set up a maintenance program, we have not only a sustainable, you know, plantings or we have a sustainable maintenance plan, I think is kind of what we're getting at. So, you know, maybe, maybe it could be reworded to reflect that, but, you know, certainly we don't want to discourage people from volunteering, but it seems like it's more successful if it's, if it's supervised by city staff.
I agree. I'm just, I'm just giving you a perception of how it felt when I, when I heard it the
All right. Anything else? Hearing none, so that we have the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Thanks, Dan. R twenty, twenty twenty-three, this one's coming from Finance. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right. R twenty, twenty twenty-three is a resolution approving a financial agreement between the State of Wisconsin and the City of Stoughton for costs associated with the reconstruction of South Fourth Street from Milwaukee Street to Isham Street, scheduled to be constructed in twenty twenty-five. So moved.
Yes.
Second?
Second by Caravelo. Alder Person Schumacher.
This is coming in from, from grant monies where it is a sixty percent coverage that, that we get the forty, we're going with the forty percent and it's sixty percent covered by the grant, not to exceed eight hundred and thirty-four thousand. This would be a DOT-led project as opposed, for a street construction as opposed to our usual street constructions. And that's about it on that.
All right. Anything you want to add, Director Scheel?
Very similar to previous DOT agreements that we've had related to the fifty-one, Highway fifty-one corridor improvements, but this is a separate street. As suggested, this will be a DOT-led project. The bill funding requires that process to be utilized in this. We scored well enough to get a pretty significant funding on this project and we're pleased to be able to move forward with it in twenty twenty-five. If there's any questions, Brett Haber is also online and was integral in putting the application in.
All right. Anything you want to add, Brett?
Yeah, we're very thankful to have this opportunity to get these, these dollars and put them to good use. Rodney and I and as well as Strand have already been working with the DOT to put together a good plan for this corridor. So we're just looking to secure this funding and looking for your approval tonight.
All right. A question came up earlier for Alder Person Caravelo. It came from Alder Person Reeves at Finance. And the question was, is how was this one selected? For, for the MPO?
Well, since I'm on the MPO.
Putting you on the spot.
I, I, there, when, when MPO staff, the MPO staff did not suggest, this was among a handful of, they presented us with different scenarios. I think we had three or four options of how their funding would be directed or allocated. And this was part of a plan that just ended up making the most sense because of the funds were dispersed through more communities for smaller projects where it seemed like maybe traditionally, I guess, their funding was more distributed to kind of, I guess, more Madison-focused or much larger projects. So when this came up for us to vote, we just kind of spread the funds out among smaller projects to more communities and Stoughton just happened to benefit from that one.
All right. Are there any?
We submitted, I think it was six different projects, the bill, grants, and this was, was one that we had ranked a little bit lower on our priority list, but I think funding wise and Alder, you can correct me if I'm wrong, kind of fit within where they saw the, the funding in twenty twenty-five being. So again, we're, we're happy to, to take this money and put it to good use, but we did submit six others as well.
And certainly appreciate the time and effort you put into putting all six together because I remember when we reviewed them that day, that, you know, each one of them was unique and had its own, you know, set of criteria that you tried to put in to meet the, the priorities that were laid out in the bill grant. And sometimes that's not easily understandable. So I think having a variety of projects in there, and as I recall, this one kind of focused on the pedestrian, you know, pedestrian safety is maybe one of the, the areas they were looking at.
Correct.
Yeah. So, and this one will tie in well with the development that's occurring on Isham Street as well as Magnolia Springs. So we think this would be, be a great project for us. Anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? All right. The next two are coming from Public Safety. Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue a cigarette and tobacco products retail license to Madison Smoke Shop Two, excuse me, Two, Inc., located at twenty-five oh-one Jackson Street, Suite two hundred, and I would move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Hirsch. Alder Person Jensen.
Yes. Public Safety met on January twenty-fifth and recommended approval on a five-zero vote. There were no issues indicated by either the clerk or the chief. I think, yep, Dan's still here if you have any questions.
All right. Any questions related to this one?
Yeah, it's just, again, we're.
Yeah, we're, we're going to talk about it.
Yeah, I think that Matt had mentioned with the last one that under some state statutes, there's really not much we can do on these.
Very little authority when it comes to, as, I mean, as I understand it, if they check the boxes on the application, we have no discretion but to issue the license for this particular type of license.
I can, I can tell you though that we will have a discussion in, in Public Safety as to what, if anything, we can do.
I will say, that's with respect to tobacco. The, the question of whether the city has authority when it comes to vaping is a more complicated and question and, and there may be some authority there if the city would like to explore that, but it's a, it's a maybe you have some authority, not a you absolutely have some authority kind of.
Oh, I love those.
Yeah.
Those sound expensive to me.
Well, that, that this has come up previously and I think the council shied away from leading the way on regulating vape products. But if you want to bring it up again, let me know.
All right. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I got one.
Sure, go ahead.
It's a generalized question with tobacco licensing and/or liquor licensing and that. Do the, they're, they're not allowed to sell until they're issued the license, like we, we have, do we have to approve it here before they're allowed to sell anything?
Correct. I believe that is correct.
I believe that is the whole point behind the license.
Okay.
So with alcohol, for example, if you are selling alcohol without a license, then you can be, you know, you can be prosecuted for that, subject to some penalties. I assume the same is true with tobacco. I'm just not, I haven't seen it really in the tobacco context.
I was just curious as to have locations that, that can put signage up for such things before they're open for business. That's sort of presumptuous.
Yeah, I don't know if they're actually open though, but yeah. It sends a message, opening soon and they'll have a license, so it's not certain, but it's likely.
Right. No law against being presumptuous. Or shameless.
Stop by, check them out. All right. Any other questions on this one? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next one, Alder Person Jensen.
Yes, it's a Resolution twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a Class B beer and Class C wine license for Dairyland Desserts LLC. Laura Romaine, owner, agent, DBA Dairyland Dessert Cafe. The premise located at one seventy-six East Main Street and I would move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll.
I'll say.
Who wants it?
Flippa coin.
All right, second, by Caravelo, Alder Person Jensen.
Yep, again, no issues, chief's here if you have any questions, and I think, well, the only other thing, I think that Matt, you had a question about the storage?
Well, I just, when I looked at the map, you know, I had a question, it's, something didn't seem add up to me.
And Candy answered your question on that.
Well, I mean.
Here's the map, it's on the screen now.
Well, it says in the kitchen, no beer or wine here, I just strikes me as unlikely that there's probably, I mean, most places like this do store some, I think maybe her intent is to say it won't be served or consumed in there, but the way it's presented, then they couldn't be, they couldn't have any stored in there either.
Yeah, the, the note I got from Candy was, is that she checked with them and assured her that there would be no storage.
All right. Sounds like we're good. And Candy, this one is beer and wine in the former Big Sky, is that what this is?
Yep. That is correct.
All right, anything else you wanted to add?
No, Alder Jensen verified that there will be no wine or beer stored in the kitchen. She said she does not have any room at all for that.
Yeah, all right, any other questions from council members? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries, had entertained the motion to adjourn, so moved. Motion by Jensen. Second by Caravelo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you, have a good night.
Happy Valentine's Day, everyone.
Fantastic.
Good night.
All right, night.
My goodness.